Good evening, welcome to the Select Board meeting for Long Meadow Monday, July 6, 2015. We'll start with the Pledge of Legions.
The Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have one quick announcement I'm gonna make. We had a very small agenda change. We had our Acting Town Manager send us out some information on a recent ruling that we made on the water rates, so we're gonna have a slight discussion sometime in the agenda tonight to see if, see where we want to keep that. Any other announcements? Any announcements?
I can, either announcements or Town Manager's report. Paving on Long Meadow Street by Cooley Brook will be this week, which, well, I, we are gonna get a couple of days of rain, but hopefully they'll get that done by the end of this week. And then, once that's done, we can start paving on Laurel Street. They had, they have raised the structures, like the manhole covers and the water valves and things like that, so watch your tires. You know, be mindful of the, of the raised structures and the roadways, but hopefully by the end of the month, a lot of our major paving projects from the FY-15 capital plan will be completed.
Good. Marie, anything?
Just, it could be under comments, or...
Oh, I do have one more, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Um, we did receive some feedback today about our new waste taller, Waste Management. Waste Management's a big company, and I think they generally do a good job. We, we received excellent feedback about them when we were kind of going through the process. At the direction or at the, by strong suggestion of our recycling solid waste coordinator, Arlene Miller, the, the transition was a good time to focus on what our rules are for recycling. And some folks today didn't get their recycling picked up. And if you go to the website, the rules are there, but generally, everything has to be kind of cleaned out, rinsed out, and no little plastic shopping bags or things like that can be in the recycling bin. My understanding is that the Massachusetts Recycling Facility, I think that's what the acronym is, it's called the MRF, in Springfield where we send our recycled materials, are installing new sorting equipment that will no longer accept un, you know, non-rinsed-out plastics, cans, things like that. And that affects the value of the recycled materials, which in turn impacts the amount we get, you know, paid back from the MRF. So, it is kind of an important thing, and, you know, why do I have to rinse out my yogurt cup? Well, there is a financial impact downstream that you may not be aware of, so I just hope folks will be patient and remember to rinse things out, no plastic bags recycling.
Steve, Stephen, just a comment. A few years ago, we had made, I'd forgotten better thing, flyers or something for them to leave behind. I don't know if they've got that, so rather than just not be picked up, there was something, they just kind of check off something, maybe we could look into doing that.
They do have notices that they're leaving.
Okay, okay.
And, you know, and I give, you know, in terms of responsiveness, you know, sure, sort of the first week out, they've been sending pictures, the drivers actually have been taking pictures and sending them. And tomorrow, there should be something posted on the website and on the town's Facebook page, kind of a, you know, don't do these kind of examples from town. So, we're trying to, it's a learning process for everyone. It kind of, Republic Services who also did a very good job, was a little more forgiving with that stuff. But like I said, the MRF is making changes with how they sort their materials, so that's why we need to be a little extra careful.
Okay. Did you have any more?
No, I was just gonna wait for comments.
Okay. Resident comments. Richard?
Thank you, sir. Richard Lyons, 608 Franklin Road. I don't know how to really put this. Yeah, I'll go from the start. I've always felt that what's good for the town is good for the residents and vice versa. What's good for the residents is good for the town. That's why I was always an advocate of keeping our own dispatchers, not putting them into a cauldron. When, I think it was either the first part of this year or the last, of, part of last year, when I heard rumors about the center coming up, I said, "Oh, here we go again." And I contacted the chief. Well, we had a joke going on for a while. I asked him how the care and feeding of the citizens are. And he said, "Oh, pretty good." That started back when I asked the question about, are there calls that are coming in primarily for public safety, or are they out for other things from the citizens of the town? And he says, predominantly, they're for other things. We have to give priority to the public safety, but if anybody calls in, we try to accommodate them. They are the citizens, they are the taxpayers. So, I asked him, is, starting up again, he says, "Please don't say, uh, get into anything on this." He went on to explain that under the new regulations, we would have to have two dispatchers on at all times, and not just the very dedicated people that we have now, but people that are trained on the new equipment that's coming in. And he says, "We can't afford that in this town. And we can't afford not to get the equipment when the state is going to pay for it." He says, it would, he didn't say the word bankrupt, he says, "It would be very, very hard on the town budget." I accepted that. He's a dedicated police officer, he knows what he was saying. Then it's, the fruition came up with this meeting that we had. And they basically told the same thing, but they didn't come right out and say it. If you don't jump in, now you're gonna be at the end of the proverbial bucket. But there are, so I do have to support it, because it's the future, it's what's required, and we want to make sure that our citizens have the most, our best service. Last week, I noticed a woman standing on 91 next to her car, kind of between two roads. By the time I got to where I could pull over and put in a call going up to North Hampton, then being routed back down to the Springfield State Police barracks, it was longer than it took, would take a cruiser or a fire dispatch to get to my house. So, that's why I would disagree with what they were saying, that we should start off slow. We're gonna open up into that. We want our own 911 calls coming in as soon as possible, and the people that we're paying to be trained on how to do that as soon as possible. If you look at 365 days times 24 hours, that's 8,760 hours in the year. The town offices are open approximately 1,911 hours, if you go by 50 in two weeks, times 36.75 hours. Then you subtract 11 holidays and four days that, for whatever reason, storms or anything like that, that the town offices can't be opened. That brings it down to 1,801.5 hours that the town offices are open. That means that for 6,958.95 hours each year, the dispatchers that we have are the town, to the citizens of this town. They're the people that answer all the questions, they're the people that give the advice. I would say that we should have to consider keeping at some of the dispatchers as a service to the citizens of the town for 24 hours, where there's telephone calls, it's gonna go in to somebody that knows the town, knows the public safety and other things, and can get things organized, as our dispatchers have been doing for so, so many years. They're not just there sitting down and waiting for calls to come in, they're doing other work in the offices while they're there. Also, I brought out an old scanner that I've had for years, and over the weekend, I wanted to listen to what had happened. They actually help dispatch, which is their job, but not just, we get a call, you go there. They would help organize, get this car there, this car's close, or maybe they can handle it. They organize the things, and things run very, very smoothly. We don't want that. I know we can't keep our own dispatches we have now, but I think the town can afford to have something running on a 24-hour basis for the citizens of this town.
Well, that decision's yet to be made, Richard, so we're, that's way out in the future. They're just starting discussions.
I know.
It's just in its infancy.
I understand that, but this is a time that we have to look at stuff like that, because they're gonna make presentations to us, this has to be done, and that has to be done. We have to make sure that the people in the center over there now, the senior citizens, have someplace to go, something to do before we do that.
Well, that's, you're, you're jumping way ahead of the horse, way ahead of the horse.
Yeah, but the Pony Express had those horses out all over the place. Thank you.
But there, as the people listened, I appreciate your comments, Richard. People listened, last week, we had a presentation that was just in its infancy. This is just the first opening of the book. There'll be a lot more discussions come down, and a lot more decisions to be made. But I do thank you, Richard. Any other citizen? Okay. Select Board comments?
Yeah, Richard, I, I have a couple of comments I just wanted to add. The first one, Stephen, in addition to your comments about Waste Management, I had mentioned something to you earlier. I, I think it would be useful for, for the town to make available an access for Waste Management, not necessarily for the citizens to call, but somewhere they can call if there are any issues. We had a couple of very, very minor glitches the first week, but I think now that the, you know, they're finishing their first round of the town, things are gonna get a whole lot better, so I'm looking forward to some things like that. I also got a note from somebody today that said, "Gee, I didn't know we had a new waste taller." I don't know, you know, how they missed that, but clearly, we could, probably should, I don't know if you want to put some-
I just swung by their house and told them in person. I don't know what else we could've done.
Well, I, you know, I don't know if we need to post it more on our Facebook page or our website page, or-
I, I think we did all that, I mean-
Whatever, yeah, I know, but-
And I think you mentioned it three times at three different meetings.
Well, you know, people obviously aren't listening to, listening to us tonight. I'm just saying that, that we, you know, my comment was, like, maybe we can always do a better job of, of communicating that. But certainly, the emergency contact, I think, is useful. And also, just might want to make a note that we've gotten a couple of notes about road closures from town residents, and if my email is indicative of what's to come, we may get a couple more. But just thought I'd point that out, that our comments have been, nobody has said anything to us. They're starting, I think people are, at least have started saying something to, to the Select Board with some road closures. Not a lot of calls, but some. The last thing I just wanted to make a comment on was a discussion that's been going on within the school building committee, and I think it's important to bring an update, and I, I think this is as good a time as any. For people who don't know at home, there, there is still an active Long Meadow School Building Committee based on the completion of Long Meadow High School, even though people don't see a lot of work going on, and there is in fact, no work going on. There's a lot of financials still to be closed, primarily having to do with things that are, some things called mass chips, which is really a, an environmental and ecology system that pays us additional funds for making our, our building environmentally sound and other things. And all those submissions are going on. As people may or may not have heard, there actually was a differential in cost that, for this building, relative to what we anticipated being on the town side. That's a nice way of saying the town side had an overrun. The overall cost of the project was below budget, but the town share was a little bit above budget. How much above budget, we have not yet determined, and that's the purpose of my statement here, is that we are hoping to know very soon, but because of some deferments and other things, it looks like that, that number, based on the Mass, Mass State Building, Mass School Building Committee, will not be known for some time. And so, the reason I'm making a comment here is that I think it behooves the Select Board and Town Manager to consider putting a placeholder warrant article on our fall town meeting. I don't believe we'll know the number in time to put it on the published warrant, but we will know the number, or should know the number, prior to the meeting. And I think it'd be very beneficial for us to be able financially close out this project at the fall town meeting, and talk about how we're gonna do that, because if we don't, just carries over even longer into the spring, and there's, there's no sense carrying money on the books that we need for a project that we don't. So, the best estimate is the Mass School Building Authority, MSBA, will be meeting sometime in September or October, at which point after that, we'll probably know the final cost to the town, and we'll certainly know by the floor of the town. We have every reason to believe we'll know it by the floor of the town meeting. And so, I just asked Richard, that you as chair, and Stephen, you know, we consider putting in a, a placeholder that, you know, whether we put in "not to exceed" or put in some, some number, knowing we can change that number at the fall town meeting, we ought to consider doing that. And I had that discussion with Tom, Tom, who, the, Jocelyn Lesser, from Jocelyn, Tom Murphy from Jocelyn Lesser, about potentially doing that.
Okay. Can I just call in? Because I, Mark is right, this isn't a thing, and really it's caught, and the reason we don't know is a lot of it is really state bureaucracy and paperwork and this mass chip certification, which is tied to the commissioning of each, I mean, it really is, it, it's really not a simple, you know, it's, you know, in the mail or something like that. There's a lot of steps involved in the closeout, it's a highly detailed accounting procedure. And I think, overall, the project came in under budget, but if you look at the total amount of 76 million, or however the guaranteed maximum price of the contract, we came in under that number. But within the accounting of it, there's a town share of stuff that the town's responsibility, and then there's the MSBA share, which is the state's responsibility, and they say yes or no to certain, to the eligibility of certain expenditures. So, there, there wasn't an overage because we expanded scope, or threw things in at the end on the town side, it was more, there were some changes in MSBA policy and some undiscovered site conditions that MSBA doesn't pay for, that fell to the town side. So, I just, there is going to be a need to increase the town's contribution, the town's share of the contributions to the high school, but I just want to make sure that it's, you know, it's not, it wasn't a result of negligence or anything like that. I mean, it's really just more of a bookkeeping thing. And the other thing is, one of the things we have to determine is the, the amount, and if the board actually wants to, because there is some question, I think, Mark, is whether or not the board, whether Town Meeting needs to vote on it, or if the Select Board can vote on it.
Well, I mean, I don't know if we want to get into discussion now, but there's multiple ways of funding it. If it's funded through a bond, the town's already voted to do that. But if we, for example, want to transfer money from free cash, Town Meeting would have to do that.
That's correct.
And so, I mean, we need to, you know, we can kind of set the direction, but bonding costs people more in their taxes. Moving money out of free cash is money they've already been taxed, it's a one-time payment, and we might want to consider doing that. And that's why I was thinking, if we go that direction, you want it for the fall town meeting.
I would, I would agree with that, if the state's timing, if they, if they get us back the information we need, I, I agree with that.
Tom, Tom told me that they expect to have it late September, early October, the latest, which means we'll have it the end of October.
I think they said that, I think they said that in June last year.
I know, but I'm optimistic with it.
No, I know. I, I, we, I share your desire to get it closed out.
Any other comments? Go ahead, Marie.
I have a couple. One is, Richard and I attended the planning board meeting, and they have a lot of work that they're doing right now, and I really appreciate the hard work that they're doing between the new, the new building that we're having with the shops, and also the, Williams Place is also having massive renovations all about the same time. So, this is a lot of work, and I really appreciate the hours they're putting in. Also, the Town Manager and I attended the 91 Viaduct meeting that was occurring downtown to tell us where they were in the project and what was going to happen. And I know that I'm receiving alerts on my email, and anyone who's interested in receiving alerts on when they're closing down lanes, when, how many they're closing down, they could go to Mass DOT and go connect to the Viaduct, 91 Viaduct project, and then sign up, and then the alerts will go directly to your email. Be interesting if we could have that maybe on the website, so people could go and see how they're doing the links, and maybe if we could put on Facebook if there is the days that they're gonna be shutting down two lanes, because sometimes it's really going to be very hard to get downtown, and you might want to start now planning on what your alternate routes are going to be. And talking about that, website looks great. And I'm really looking forward to more material and information going through the new website. We've been talking about this for years, even before I got on the Select Board. So, stop, take a look at it, review it, and committees can start putting more material and information on there too, because it's great for content. And I'm hoping it will increase communication down. So, thank you very much for your hard work, Stephen, on that.
Okay, one quick note. Mark always keeps reminding me that very few people have my phone number. And, but what I'll do, I, I do have an email address, and if you would like my personal home phone number, please drop me an email, and I'll be sure to respond back with you. I'd rather do it that way than to broadcast it to the world.
That's probably a good idea, Richard.
Because there are times when people do like to call individuals to get attention, and Mark said he's been getting a lot of calls he thought should be coming to me also, or at least sharing, sharing with the activity. Okay, no other comments? So, my email address, by the way, is online, but it's r-foster@longmeadow.org.
I think you're, is the contact information on the website now?
Yes.
The phone number's not there, though.
But the emails are up to date.
Okay, you can, you can find it to the, to the website as well.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, Board and Committee, interviews. Peter, you don't come up?
I might want to add for the record that Peter had show, had shown up the night that the meeting was canceled on June 10th, I believe, and that we apologized, because the word did get out very, very late on that one, and then our secretary, Debbie, was unable to get in touch with everybody. And I, I might share that Peter and I've also shared some correspondence concerning some of the procedures for how we do this, and I'm doing a little research and be getting back to them. We have a bylaw that's, I think, could be called outdated and antiquated, and just, sometimes just doesn't make sense, but we're gonna have to find out where the language came from. It may be in the MGLs, and we can't do anything about it, but we're certainly giving it a whirl. Now, Peter, you're an incumbent, and you're coming back on the-
Cultural Council.
Cultural Council.
Yes.
And, and I know we rarely ask any questions. I, I understand that, I understand the process, but, but, you know, you know, I know you're a very active member in the community.
Yes.
And, and I think it'd be nice if you shared some of what you're doing, the activities, with the, with the town people, so they understand what's going on.
Well, you know, I've, I've been here for 35 years. I taught at the high school, helped build the program with Mike Musey, and since retiring, I continue to teach privately, as well as do a lot of work with students from Long Meadow High, as well as other school systems all around the state. I'm on the Symphony Board, I'm on the WNCC, which is the Wilberheim Nature and Cultural, on that Board of Directors, which runs the Fountain Park. And we're developing all sorts of great arts things there as well. We run a summer concert series out there. I, a lot of things that affect this, this locale, I think. I really enjoy being part of the Cultural Council for, and we actually had our first fundraising thing last year, very successful at the library, where we had never really raised funds for the Cultural Council before. We kind of took what we were given and that little bit, and we dispersed it as best we could, and we looked around, and other communities were doing that sort of thing. So, we planned an event, which we made quite a bit at. And so, we will do that again this fall. In October, I don't have the, the date, but we will do it again at the library, hopefully with at least as much success, or maybe more. My wife and I performed at that. We'll do it again this year, if people will have us. And so, but I'm excited to be on the Board. I think it's a, a great thing. We, we have people out there that rely on Cultural Council money to, to make their livings. I, they, they work for a lot of Cultural Councils around the state, artists, where their funding has been cut back in lots of ways. I mean, the arts, it seems to be always impacted, but especially during a hard economic time like we've experienced recently. So, you know, the Cultural Council opportunities have kept a lot of food on people's tables. So, I'm glad to be part of that. And it's good for the town. I mean, the activities are terrific.
Yeah. Anybody have any questions for Peter?
I loved your party last year, it was really fabulous, the town getting together, and I loved your singing, it was fabulous.
Well, thanks. It was, it was a, it was, I, I don't, I, I expected it to be successful. It's a very positive committee. We expected it to be successful, and, and we're really revved up about the next one, so.
And so, I was gonna recommend this year, when we have the new website, be sure Cultural Council gets on there and, you know, sends out information on everything you're doing. But again, we will have to be careful about your dates, because a lot of times I find out groups get together, and they plan dates, and it ends up, there's a conflict. So, check with the schools, check with, you know, the regional, because I really want you to have a successful evening, it was really fabulous.
Thanks very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I appreciate you coming back in, Peter. I know there's some scheduling conflicts. And actually, this was better than us even trying to think questions to ask you, because you get a total overview, the public is much more aware of what you're doing in our community, and how much contributions you're making to our community.
Well, I, I want to credit the people on the Council. I mean, I was, I was brought in a number of years ago, didn't really know what I was getting into, didn't even know it existed, you know, to speak of, after all these years of being in town. And it's been a pleasure. People have, are very giving members, and they've come up with lots of wonderful ideas.
Good. It sounds like you are getting a lot of good ideas. Anybody, no other questions?
No.
Thank you, Peter.
Yeah, thanks very much.
And we did have another gentleman supposed to be here tonight, Edward, and he apparently is not here yet, so we'll, he may be running late, we'll pull him up later. Let's see, town. You want to get on with some of the business?
I mean, obviously, I was away, so there's not a very detailed Town Manager report, but I-
No, there's not.
I can just do it in a few minutes. Just, give me a moment. I have, just verbally. Thank you, Marie, for the feedback on the website. We are, I want to commend IT Director Kevin Lorinda.
Former, former IT-
Former IT Director Kevin Lorinda, for really doing the research and helping us choose Civics Plus as our vendor. Civics Plus is really a very popular vendor for municipal websites. It's got a great new look, a great new interface, the level of support we get from Civics Plus is very high, which is great, because now that he's former, now that he's moved on to a new job, like the day after the website went live, we're, you know, we're a little shorthanded in the IT department. Victor Rule, who assists the town in a lot of our IT stuff, has also been instrumental. Town staff has been training on it, and so, we hope to keep the growing pains to a minimum, but we do welcome feedback on it. And, you know, when I interviewed, that was an issue that was raised as a, as a priority for the Board, so I'm proud to be able to deliver that, and hopefully provide better electronic services to residents. And I, you know, just really scratched the surface of what it's capable of doing. And so, I'm kind of excited of what it not only does now, but the potential for much greater service in the future. I did, I was not, I did not attend the planning board meeting, but I did speak with the traffic consultant for the shops, and I just want the folks at home to know that we are working. We did, you know, review the traffic study, we think they did a thorough job looking at the potential impacts, and we're moving into kind of a next phase of what those, how would you mitigate those impacts, and what would they cost? And that would be information that would be then presented to the shops to, you know, that the planning board would then probably consider as a part of their decision-making process. Speaking of traffic and mitigation, I just wanted to give a brief update. The casino mitigation upfront payment we received of $850,000, we've used a portion of that to retain VHB, who's a traffic engineering firm that's done a lot of work in town. And we've gotten to kind of 25% design of the signal, excuse me, well, the traffic signal improvements for the intersections along Long Meadow Street, as well as Converse and Laurel. And I just want to convey to everyone that that, that work is ongoing, you know, and just kind of looking at, really the big thing is how does, how do you optimize the timing of the signals, but also, how do you then optimize- the timing of the signals, but also how do you then optimize the interaction with Interstate Ninety-One and the city of Springfield's traffic light that's there by the ball-diamond? So those are some, those are some kind of tougher discussion points we're having, but that work is ongoing. And I did make the announcement about the paving, and I think that's just about it. Oh, and our new fire apparatus, fire apparatus one, the best aerial, aerial truck in the East Long Meadow Fall July Parade, so we are proud of our fire department. You know, we have our acting chief, Andy Frazier, was here, and we, I made the comment in the staff meeting that I don't think former Chief Madison ever won an award at the parade, so we're already, we're already off to a new era.
I'm sure that makes Eric feel good.
I honestly hope he'll be watching.
Anything else, Stephen?
Sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to comment. I was at that Planning Board meeting and saw, and I didn't realize that the town helped choose who they were going to use to do the traffic study, and that was a brilliant move, because the company was GPI that had done our work for the casino mitigation, so they knew our town, they knew the problems, and he was able to dovetail into his reports not only what would happen when the shops opened up, but I'm putting on top of that when we have the added traffic from the casino. So it was really a brilliant move, and I think their, their report blew me away with how thorough it was, and they really had covered everything, and I think you would not, if you were taking another traffic company to do it, it wouldn't have gone into as much depth as GPI did, so I have to thank you for that, that was phenomenal.
I think, I agree with that, I think they did, they did get to a level of depth that is probably uncommon for, like, just a commercial development. Oh, there's one more thing, that made me think of another, I can't remember. All right.
All right. Stephen, I just have a question. Last time, I just asked a question about the Converse Street piping, I was wondering if you had a chance, I know you were away, but just for the next, I'm trying to get an answer of, you know, the assessment of the pipes under Converse Street before we go ahead and spend four million dollars to surface?
Oh, the resurfacing? I did, I do have an answer for that.
Okay.
So, we did discuss that internally, and the bottom line is that the underground appears to be in good shape, they have had it televised, they snaked the camera through the pipes, and so it's under, is in good shape. Replacing the undergrounds would triple or quadruple the cost of the project, and so if we waited to fix the pavement until we were going to replace the undergrounds, LongMeadle Street would be impassable by the time we were able to probably afford it. I mean, Converse Street would end up being impassable by the time we were able to afford to do that.
I think the real, the real thing is it'll go to the next cycle.
It'll go to the next cycle, but I mean, it's, it's, the pipe, I want to say, I think the underground into sewer is about sixty years old, which sounds old, but in the world of...
I don't, I don't think it sounds old.
Not, not in the world of infrastructure.
Not in the world of people, either.
Yeah.
That was humor.
No, so I think it's one of the things, the paving has to be done, and, and the state is paying for it, and that's great. I think if we do discover issues with underground, we will approach it, we will do any necessary replacements, but so far, the, the engineering department feels the condition is, is worth doing the pavement. And I do remember what I wanted, and that is a reminder that the retirement party for the, for Chief Madison, Chief Siano, and DPW Director Rabel is at Twin Hills on Thursday, July thirtieth, from six to nine P.M. Tickets are available for purchase in Town Hall, they are twenty dollars.
Yeah, go ahead, Marie.
No.
I'd like to add one more thing, though, that we don't control the utilities. We notified them we're going to pay, we pleaded with them to come to the table, but anything can happen.
Like, yeah, Colton Place, for the folks on Edgewood Avenue, I mean, it's, they, and the people out there see yellow cones and trucks with flashing lights, and sometimes it's hard to distinguish who's a town contractor, what is the town's own street crew, and what is a utility company. We got all done, ready, we replaced the water line on it, on Edgewood, and we're all ready to go to pave it, and then the gas company said they want to replace their main, that, and then they did the same thing in Colton Place. Both of those are wrapping up, I would expect paving to be done on both of those streets by the end of the month. But you're right, Richard, and it's funny, because the gentleman was here a couple of weeks ago talking about, you know, when you tear up in a road, why don't you put the utilities underneath, and A, it's not for us to do that, we don't own those lines, and B, if we required that, the cost of electricity and gas would just, it would be unaffordable, because they would pass that, those costs through to the customers.
Right.
You know, and I, I agreed with the gentleman's sentiment, but it's just not a reality in the world of living now.
In principle, he's absolutely correct, but it's, and the reality is a difficult one. Marie?
I think, though, it's worth to reach out to the gas company especially, because I know that they are going around and trying to take care of the infrastructure, and coming from Colony Hills, that's, that's old neighborhood, yeah.
I hope you can believe we, we interact with utilities regularly. We do, you know, we start off every year talking to them, but we do, are in constant contact with them for stuff they're doing, so I don't want to convey that they're out there doing things we're not aware, just sometimes their schedule changes from what they told us it was going to be, and that's been the big issue.
Yeah, I mean, Richard, one of the last hearings we had from the electric company was just to put up new poles for a hundred and fifty feet or two hundred feet, and I asked them why they even put it underground, and they weren't even willing to do it for a hundred and fifty feet, so they're not likely willing to do it for the dire street.
Yeah, well, they would do it for a price. That was the problem, and it's expensive. They will run a hundred and fifty-foot underground for close to a thousand dollars for residential, and you have to pay for the pole. I think that's what, the word was, it's, it's quite expensive, just for a small underground service. And that's not putting your trans否ors underground, Mark, that's just, that's just from the pole underground to the house instead of attached to the house.
It's got to be hundreds of thousands of dollars a mile. I've heard a million a mile for certain things, but it's got to be hundreds of thousands of dollars a mile to do that work. And then you have the utilities trying to cooperate with each other, telephone, cable, electric, and then gas company, plus our water and sewer that has underground, it really is complex.
It'd be a lot easier if we were starting over, building the town from scratch.
Yeah.
Then everything would be underground, just build it, so. Okay, they're all, Stephen?
I believe that's it.
Okay. Now, any motion to approve minutes for May eighteenth, regular meeting?
I move to approve the minutes for May eighteenth, regular meeting.
I'll second.
I have some, some...
Okay, discussion.
Some corrections.
Okay.
Kurt Friedman's name is spelled with a C, not a K, Kurt.
Okay, give me one second while we get to the... Yeah, okay?
That's it.
Okay. No more discussion, all in favor? Aye. Motion for the June tenth, two thousand and fifteen special meeting?
I move to approve the June tenth special meeting minutes.
Okay.
I'll second, I'll second.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for June fifteenth?
I move to approve the June fifteenth regular meeting minutes.
I'll second.
I have, yeah, I have a bunch of comments on that, if I can get it, get it over here.
Is there enough that you would want to give them to her?
Uh, perhaps, or it's down in the end with the police chief position and things like that. I mean, it's, it's essentially one, one paragraph that wasn't clear, because it, well, it's...
Dispatch Center?
No, it was, it's the, it's the section above Town Manager, and Town Manager Report, he said the police chief position was being looked at internally in MRI. I did an, did an assessment of the superior officers in the town, see positive feedback. Mr. Crane felt office for the position would be made by the end of the month. I think you meant to say searches for two of the positions would be contracted, and the police chief position would be subject to appointment, instead of what you said is, and also, the positions were well-defined during the search, and then you said...
Well, I'll withdraw my motion, and then we can work our line.
Yeah, just go ahead, okay.
I'll send those to her, and same with, the same, I'll tell you the same's with the twenty-nine.
Is it twenty-nine, the same issue?
Same with the twenty-nine, okay.
Okay, I won't bother putting a motion on the Board.
So, June fifteenth and June twenty-nine?
Yeah, and he will, he will transmit some corrections, see?
I'll send those to you.
And then I'd like to move back over again, please have these back for our next meeting?
Yeah.
And then we'll get them approval. Okay. Okay, block party approval.
I move, we approve the block party for Farmington Avenue for August twenty-ninth with a range date of August thirtieth.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on it? No entertainment and no alcohol to be consumed on town property. What was the purpose of the closure, am I missing it?
Yeah, it's a block party.
Party.
Oh, yeah, block party, excuse me. You mean the big, bold, black letters, yeah. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Select Board, Town Manager Team building. Stephen, would you rather move on to the appointment?
Sure, we can do that.
Why don't we do that, and we can get our staff up? So, I'm going to turn, I'm going to turn the floor over to you.
Sure, and I want to say, just the agenda to save fire and police chief, tonight, we're just gonna, I'm going to bring forward my recommendation for fire chief. We're still going to do some process items on the police chief. It really got, essentially got delayed because of my vacation, as well as the DPW Director search, I apologize for that. So, it's my pleasure tonight to recommend Captain John Dearborn as the next Long Meadow Fire Chief, and I would invite Captain Dearborn to come to set the table. Just to give a brief overview of what the process we went through, as we discussed before, we did retain Municipal Resources Inc., MRI, to advertise this position externally. They did so, and we had, we received applications for all, from all over the country, MRI, about thirty applications, they, they did the initial shortlisting, they asked about a dozen for follow-up essays, and then did a shorter list from there for phone interviews, and then brought forward a list of six finalists for in-person interviews that myself and the representative from MRI conducted. And not surprisingly, we had, we had two internal candidates, and not surprisingly, both internal candidates were forwarded at every stage of the process by the consultant team as being really strong and viable candidates, even compared to potential fire chiefs from across the country. And I'm proud to say that Captain Dearborn was the front-runner, based on the feedback I received from MRI, he was the front-runner at virtually every stage, and did very well in, in all the phases of the screening process, which was, I think, fairly rigorous. And he and I, you know, discussed contract terms and reached an agreement fairly quickly, showing, I think, his, you know, desire to have the position and be reasonable, and I really am looking for, I, I would ask for the Board to confirm his appointment, because I think he's going to make a fantastic member of our team. There are big shoes to fill, but I, I'm confident that Captain Dearborn's up for the job. He, he has, and again, he has drafted a transition plan and kind of his vision for where the Department can go. I don't know if that made it into the packet, and we can certainly make copies available to everyone. I would invite him at this time to kind of outline some of that, or we can show him to open up for, for direct questioning.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to hear what your outline is first.
Sure.
And then it'll open up possible discussion points.
Okay. With permission of Chair, I just, real quick, would like to thank and recognize Captain Frazier for his work as the interim fire chief. He's been the interim fire chief for the past six weeks. That transition from Chief Madison to him has been seamless, and I've been working with him over the past week, and probably the next few weeks, I'll be working with him, and so far, it's been a seamless transition, so.
Let me add one other thing, in case people in the TV or TV land are unaware, Mr. Frazier did not want to be considered for the captain's position.
You're correct, sir.
He is acting captain now, but I want everybody to be made aware of that, that...
And I do want to echo Captain Dearborn's sentiments, Captain Frazier did an outstanding job filling in.
Okay. Excuse me for interrupting.
Absolutely. And feel free, while I'm going through this, if a question comes up, you know, that's hot on your mind, just shoot. So, so currently, we're conducting a command handoff, that's what we call it in the fire service, it's a transition plan from one position to the other. What we're focused on right at the moment is the end of the fiscal year, fifteen. We've completed the year, and I can happily report that we completed with the constraints of our budget. You'll notice, I'm sure you've all seen a new ladder truck driving around, so that's actually a very planned-out project. We're approximately sixty percent through that project, we anticipate right around the twenty this month to, of course, send it into full service for the fire department. I've been very impressed with not only the equipment, but our, our members' ability to operate the vehicle, they've come a long way in it. We're in the process right now of transferring responsibility for the fiscal management of this department. We're pretty much through all of that today, there's a few more things I need to learn about softwares and things like that. We realigned all of our shift staffing, after Chief Madison left, we moved a lot of people around, we've kind of settled everything back down, we've got people going back to their regular positions, and returning our fire prevention officer back to his full-time duties, so he can catch up. Two of the most important jobs I have early on is to hire my replacement, which will be a new firefighter, and to promote my, my replacement to new captain. Hiring and promoting the right individual to meet the needs of the Department is a long-term investment. I'm fortunate to have a very talented pool of fire officer candidates, and will have no problem promoting a well-trained captain. With a new firefighter, we hope to have him in the first class of Massachusetts Fire Academy in Springfield. This will save the Department a substantial sum of money, as compared to same to Stowe, and it'll also be a great honor to be part of the first class. In the first two weeks, I'm working on, you know, conducting a budget review with anticipated expenditures, reviewing budget control and recurring expenses, such as service agreements, parental maintenance, reviewing purchasing policies, budget appropriations schedules, and in the first three months, I, I need to work closely with Mr. Miller, who's our administrative assistant, develop job aids for payroll and bill schedule functions. As you, somebody may know, he intends to retire in the fall, he's been a key player in our operations, and I think Annie and I both echo how much we appreciate his, his help in getting us through the end of the fiscal year. Without him, we would have had a tough time. So, I'm going to work through, try to get way out ahead of the transition plan with him, create a lot of job aids, so that when we have his replacement, it'll be a seamless transition. Work very hard to conduct continuous budget monitoring, and work towards developing a list of recurring costs, also conducting analysis of our vendor performance and competitiveness. Grant management, Department currently has two grants in process, the first is our SAFE Grant, which is basically the function of all of our fire prevention education, so when you see the guys out in the schools, the different things we do, so we apply for that, manage that through the year, that's only about eight thousand dollars, but we do get a lot of bang for our buck out of that. The second grant is, and I'm sure you're aware, is the Assistance Firefighter Grant, that's a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollar grant from the federal government. We are in a big project with a ladder truck now, this grant is, for the replacement of our self-contained breathing apparatus, is a comparable project for work within the Department. There's a lot of physical work for remodeling all these breathing apparatus on the vehicles, specification, RFPs, and then there's a training curve. We are leaning towards the same manufacturer we currently use, but we are evaluating the new technologies, so that should cut our training, but again, it's a core safety piece of equipment, so there will be quite a bit of training with that also. So we're having a big year at Long Meadow Fire. I'm also going to be pursuing a couple grants almost immediately, just because of deadlines. The Emergency Management Performance Grant, which is typically right around five thousand dollars, the Mya Rewards Safety Grant, we're going to do a submission for that, then we're looking at some other grant opportunities from MEMA, FEMA, and DHS. We're just starting in contract negotiations, so I need to get up to speed on that with the Town Manager, and I'll provide both operational, financial analysis of proposed collective bargaining changes with the Town Manager. As your prospective emergency manager, I have a lot of work at it, I mean, basically the whole team retired. I have quite a bit of experience in emergency management through my work with the Department of Fire Service and the Hazard Material Field. I'm a certified planning section chief, and have served at several large-scale incidents, so very, emergency management is probably one of the areas I'm, I'm pretty natural at. When we get the new police chief, DPW Director, they're going to be kind of the same boat I am, acclimbing to their new positions, so I don't want to push too hard first, but I certainly want to get an idea of their experience in emergency management and working as a part of emergency management team. Towards the fall, I plan to set up some training exercises for the new team. I've actually developed quite a few exercises, I've built for both in-town and from other communities, so I can do that at pretty low cost without getting a grant, I can basically design my own exercises. Doesn't test me as well, but it's good for the other folks. And I, as you can tell, I have some friends that can help me out, too. So, later in the fall, we'll do some more training and make sure we have all of our larger emergency management team up to speed. Grants, there's also some grants for emergency management training specifically for the Regional Homeland Security Council. I want to take a, look at taking a different approach from our fire prevention, we really focus on the fire prevention safety measures now, which would be electrical safety, cooking safety. My idea... My idea is to take a more all-hazards approach. So, when we have those captured audience, we talk about disaster preparedness, along with the cooking safety, electrical safety. It's, you get a lot of the message across within a limited time. I think it's a better use of your funding and effort. Shelter capacity, one of the goals Chief Madison passed on me was the town's desire to operate independent emergency shelter, independent of the regional capabilities. This, I think, was a work in progress to a certain extent. I do have training in shelter operation, so I work with Beverly Hershorn and the MRC folks evaluating this capability. I also will seek grant money to exercise this capability. I'm a true believer in train like you fight, fight like you train. So, we can say we have a capability, but if we've never actually exercised it, I don't believe it to be a real capability. So, I'll work with those folks, and I know they're a volunteer group, so I need to get to know them a little bit better. Community partners. Chief Madison did a great job in establishing several community partners, such as the JGS, the shelter residents with special medical needs. I need to revisit those agreements, those MOUs, make sure they're still in place, introduce myself. Going through the mail from the last six weeks, we are now tasked with a requirement to provide pet shelters. There are some regional assets for that. I just need to straighten those out. We are a few communities around that don't participate in a local emergency planning committee or regional local emergency planning committee. I actually went over to MEMA for the meeting the other day, and that was the first thing they hit me with, interest in doing that. So, I need to research that. There's some plus and minuses to that. Not having industry in Long Meadow, the local emergency planning committees typically revolve around industry, but there may be some benefits for us in getting different types of grants. Town government. The fire department interacts with all the town departments. My first sixty days, I hope to schedule meetings, one-on-one meetings with all the different department heads. At the discretion of the town manager, I look to meet with the various town committees which the fire department interacts. Feel like gaining familiarity prior to working on issue is a positive step. Also, gain to understand the concerns and challenges of the various groups is important when formulating and forwarding proposals. The community, as the fire chief, I represent a large portion of the town's ability to provide public safety. As such, it's important for the community to be familiar with its leadership. By meeting with business owners, elderly housing communities, the university, the private schools, the various civic groups, the fire chief can gain an appreciation for the community's concerns, expectation, and their perspective on his department. During my first year, I would hope to make a concerted effort to put my business card in the hands of the stakeholders, so they have the ability to communicate directly with the fire chief. From the region, there are many regional resources which Long Meadow Fire Department relies on and the town of Long Meadow to support our operations. Fortunately, I have longstanding relationships with most of them. I currently sit on two regional committees, which are involved in funding various homeland security, emergency management initiatives. I would ask to remain on these committees as it provides a slight, as it provides insight to identify opportunities which could benefit the town. Mutual aid, obviously, our department relies heavily on mutual aid. I have longstanding relationships with the fire chiefs on all sides of us. I have actually spoken to most of them within the last week, and I feel very confident in our ability to both provide and receive mutual aid. The Massachusetts Emergency Agency, Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, I went over there last week. We've actually worked towards changing the contacts for the various softwares and things that will help support some emergency management. I have a longstanding working relationship with them. Also, Department of Fire Services is a state agency which provides many services to support the fire department. We actually had their inspectional services this weekend for the Twin Hills Fireworks through the fire marshal's office, and they provide the fire academy and several other services to us. I've worked for them for years, fifteen years, so I'm familiar with them, so there's not a lot of learning curve there. So, that's kind of my first year laid out. I've got a lot to do. It's a very exciting time. I will tell you that I've received great support for the firefighters. I think they're excited about this change. There's a lot of new, and very excited, energy in the department. I'll have to rein that in a little bit, because room wasn't built in a day, but we'll go ahead and we'll get going. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
I had one quick one, and it was just a general question. You're gonna be hiring a replacement firefighter. What's the chances of getting one trained, or is it better just to go right to the academy and hire a new one?
So, we're really fortunate, sir, that we actually just went through an advertisement process, and we get them at various levels of training. We get some folks that, we require minimum training prior to even applying. So, we have some folks that'll come to us as paramedics, fully certified, with no fire experience. We'll get some that are, have a lot of fire experience with very little EMS experience. Then we'll get some kind of lower levels, where they're new firefighters at the EMT level. So, and every once in a while, we'll hit one. We actually did a couple years ago with a gentleman that left another department, fully academy certified, paramedic, and he's turned out to be a home run, so. We actually have a pretty good pool right now to choose from. So, it should be a pretty easy hire.
That's the only question I have. I didn't know how the applicant pool was running out there.
I haven't reviewed that with the captain. And I think, if I can just jump in for a second, one of the things I did not mention in my introduction was, you know, all things being equal in the process, the town has a policy of promoting from within. And so, all things being equal, generally speaking, the internal candidate would be the one we prefer to choose. And I think John went through it, Captain Dearborn went through it kind of fast there, but in an interview, and I should say that Captain McSodda did this very well as well, it's not only, if they just came into the interview and talked about what they know about the Long Meadow Fire Department, that probably wouldn't be enough. But because they were able to come in, and at every stage, which included like a fourteen-page essay that they had to write as a part of the screening process, they came in and talked about things they've learned from being a firefighter and an officer in Long Meadow Fire Department. They talked about, of course, they have somewhat of an inside advantage in terms of their research about the current fire department, but they also really talked very well about what the Long Meadow Fire Department can be, and where they think they can apply their skills to get it to, you know, to get it to move forward. And that's the part that I think I want to emphasize, and that is, being an internal candidate really ended up not being a consideration in my recommendation, because Captain Dearborn did such an excellent job, not only talking about his skills and experience in the fire service generally, but also presenting really a great vision for the department.
Good. Anyone have any questions?
Just a comment. There are two things you talked about, which I'm very excited about. One of the exercises for regional emergency planning. I've seen a few tabletops. I've heard about how important they've been when you talk about emergency management, so I'm really glad to see you're already several steps ahead of that, because you were on committees with the Department of Homeland Security. Because one of the things we did know is that Chief Madison was very involved with emergency management, so I'm thrilled to see you have that experience and the forethought on where you're already looking forward to exercises. And then the communication with the leaders in the community, as well as the committees, that's really huge. So, I commend you on both those things that you're looking forward to, and I'm really excited about you coming on board.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
John, this is a unique opportunity for you to kind of give a message to the people of Long Meadow who maybe listen, or thousands of viewers here. But more importantly, you know, what are the critical issues for the residents in town, you know, in terms of fire protection, fire safety, and some of the things that they ought to be calling on the Long Meadow Fire Department for? Maybe some of the things they ought to be calling on somebody else for instead of the Long Meadow.
Yeah, you know, I mean, we are kind of the catch-all for problems that nobody else will solve. And, you know, some days it's tough, but we will do what we can to help folks. I'm gonna encourage people, we're actually running to a lot of issues now with expiring carbon monoxide and smoke detectors. If you remember, seven or eight years ago, everybody was recommended, go out and get your carbon monoxide detectors, and everybody installed their houses, and they've saved a ton of lives. They're an absolute important piece of equipment. Unfortunately, those detectors are all expiring now, and it's increasing our call volume tremendously. If you look at the back of your carbon monoxide detector, and it's over seven years old, it's time to replace it. It's beeping. And it's not in full alarm when it beeps. It's just a random beep every now and then. It's time. Smoke detectors, battery-powered smoke detectors are now recommended every ten years. For one reason or the other, we're seeing that quite a bit. It's been a large volume. When we get a call for a carbon monoxide activation, we don't discuss on the 911 call, well, is it doing this? Isn't it doing this? We dispatch an apparatus, a special meter for monitoring carbon monoxide. But if people can actually go ahead, before they start to beep, if they're getting to be six, seven years old, go ahead to the different hardware stores and replace them, so.
Now, I know smoke detectors, some of them have radium, and can't be disposable in the trash. How about the CO detectors?
They do not.
Okay, so those can be disposable in the trash.
Yeah, remove the battery, though. Recycle the battery, please.
Great. Thanks, John.
I agree, Steven. It's always a good day when you've got staff of the quality that you have in town, or the selection process can come down and have one of our people step up the plate. That's the ideal situation, that not always happens that way. But I know Steven, personally, we had conversations, and he was kind of thrilled this process was going forward, because he stayed back and he allowed MRI to do their work, and he was briefing me here and then, and he said, well, it's opening, a lot of things are coming out we weren't aware of. So, I congratulate you on the process you've gone through.
Thank you. If I could, I'd just comment on the process. I actually really enjoyed the process, purely the essay part of it. It actually gave me an opportunity to take a step back and really think through my vision for the department going forward. And I, actually, I'd love if you have any interest to send you those essays, because it gave me, there was way too much to cover tonight, but it really, you know, looking ten years down the road, when somebody's replacing me, where I'd like to see the fire department at, so.
It's a new, it's a new set of shoes you're trying on.
Yep.
I do, like I said, we did reach contract terms. I'm happy to discuss those. Once we sign it, it'll be posted on the web. John has already signed it. Pending this next vote and swearing-in tomorrow, I'll sign it and we'll post it on the website, but it does, salary does fit within the budget parameters that were set by the board, along with some other policy changes that I think are fair to Captain Dearborn, as well as the town.
Okay, any other discussion? Entertain a motion?
Yeah, I guess my question is, generally, we've seen that contract in advance, Steven. It wasn't in our packet, you know. I mean, I understand the desire to vote here tonight, and I'd like to vote here tonight, but I feel it's a real obligation to, our duty is to approve the contract, not to approve the appointment.
I actually had thought that, Mark, and then we went back and looked at it, and it just, it doesn't, it does not mention the contract.
Yeah, it's the appointment. We figure it's inclusive, but it's, the charter calls it the appointment.
Yeah, and like I said, I'm happy to share, and I apologize for not being in the packet. I'm happy to share it. I mean, most of its stuff is boilerplate. I mean, it's the grade, the step, you know, the emergency management stipend. He gets an EMT stipend as well for maintaining the certification. You know, we did reduce the salary by ten percent. I think we are well within that. You know, the provisions that were eliminated from, you know, previous contract were, you know, carriers of vacation or buybacks specifically that don't fit with other professional administrative technical scale employees. So, he, it's, I mean, it's public information, so I'm happy to just to give the terms. We do, we do provide the professional liability insurance as an industry standard. On our scale, it's a grade six, step nine, which is about, I think, $107,000 and change in salary. Chief Madison, because he'd been here so long and had been in the position so long, was a grade six, step fifteen, which, I think it was $115,000 or something from the budget. So, and then, like Chief Madison, hopefully, Chief Dearborn will receive $3,640 as a stipend for emergency management. And again, and then on top of the salary, it's an eight percent stipend for maintaining basic EMT certification. Chief Madison was receiving seven percent, but Captain Dearborn is currently receiving a sixteen percent stipend, because he is a paramedic, which is the highest level of certification. There's not really a need for the chief to maintain that high level, so we wanted to be reasonable and give him something that's comparable to maintain his certification, so if the chief ever was called on to perform basic EMT services, he could. So, like I said, I think it is a, it's a fair contract, I think, for both parties, and fulfill some of the contract goals that the board has made clear.
How about, any other questions?
I don't know. Will we get a copy of that?
Yeah, as soon as I sign it tomorrow, I'll have to put it on the website, and I will make sure she sends a copy early.
What's the term, what's the term of the contract?
I think we're doing, do we do three or five?
Three.
Three?
Well, certainly entertain the five.
Yeah, three years. Sorry, it's a three-year contract, which is standard.
Were our other contracts three years?
Chief Madison's contract may have been a little longer, not the most recent one, but the one before may have been five years, but I think that was after he'd already been here as chief for fifteen years or so. They may have given him some stability. This is a different situation with the new chief, so.
And what is it? DPW is on an appointment letter?
DPW is on the appointment letter, but police chief and fire chief, industry practice is for contract, similar to Tom. So, on the general government side, the two chiefs and myself are the only contracted employees. The school side, I think principals have contracts and things like that, you know, super.
Is there any set guidelines for promotion from captain to the chief? There's no parameters. I know on some of the other labor contracts, you've got percentages that you follow?
There are, I mean, there are some, no, it's really, because a captain is in a union. The chief is not, so it's entirely different. It goes from basically being an hourly employee to a salaried employee, so it's really, there's really no comparison. It's a completely different paradigm for.
Oh, I understand, but you can compare them. I mean, there are scales to do that, but there is nothing set up?
No.
Such as going from a GS seven to a GS twelve or something like that?
No.
Okay. I keep wondering why we don't have some of these things.
We do have a general working out of grade thing, but it's not really designed for something like this.
Right.
I'll make a motion. We, I guess that we approve the appointment of John Dearborn to the, as captain of the Long Meadow Fire Department.
A captain?
No, it says chief of the Long Meadow Fire Department. Sorry.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I just have a question if the folks in the audience are here to speak, to show support or something otherwise, and I don't know what you guys want. I'm gonna assume it's to show support.
Here's, this is Tim Nelson, he's the chief of Amherst Massachusetts Fire Department, long friend and one of my mentors, so.
Okay.
Appreciate you coming, chief.
Anything you'd like to say?
Actually, yeah, I'll be brief.
Let's come up to the mic real quick.
If you'd speak, please.
Sure. Tim Nelson, chief of Amherst Fire Department. I just want to say, I think choosing John is the best, 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 best thing in the world to do. He is gonna be very, very good for your town and your department. We've been friends for a long time. Long, long time, back when my hair was dark and I had more. We've worked, worked together, laughed, laughed together, once in a while cried, cried together. But I am, I'm more than half, 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 to say that he is a great, great choice, and he'll do so well by you and in this town and the department. And I'm proud, proud to say that he's my friend.
Thank you, chief.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for coming down.
No problem.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Thank you very much.
No abstentions, no extra votes. Congratulations.
Congratulations, John.
Welcome on board.
Congratulations, John.
Congratulations.
Oh, you're on board, just welcome to the new slot.
I don't think he knows that new guy brings coffee at the staff meeting.
Yeah. And donuts.
And donuts, yeah.
Chief? Hey, chief?
No, the other one, John.
Did you hear what the town manager said as you were leaving?
I did.
Anybody chose not to acknowledge it. First good move.
Have a good night, gentlemen. All right, let's see.
For confirming the appointment, like I said, I share Chief Nelson's enthusiasm.
And maybe we should have, before we bring the next, maybe we should talk more about what constitutes the appointment, so we don't have confusion, because I, when we get a full board, we could have some confusion. And I know there's, and I'll be honest with you, I looked at it, I read it one way, you can read it any way you want. can read it any way you want, it says approve an appointment, and that really is the whole package, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's, we've got, and that's what I said, I had myself convinced it was contract approval, but then when I looked at it again, because I thought the appointment really was, the appointment was the contract, but then it wasn't, and just, I mean, fortunately, fortunately, we don't, the town hasn't had to do this all that much in recent memory, so that's why it's something that we're not well-practiced in. But I agree, Richard, we can certainly just confirm that we followed the right process. We did follow the similar process for the director of the council on aging, Amy Sada, who was a department head appointment.
Right.
Confirmed, it was just a vote to confirm the appointment, wasn't, you know, she was not contracted, so that's a little different, but it really is just to confirm the appointment. So, and I assume it's just a, I assume the spirit of the language is fail-safe against, you know, nepotism or some other, you know.
Pointing an incompetent person.
Yeah.
So anyway, but we can certainly have that discussion.
Yeah, I think we read.
As we advance to the next two, and just to give you an update, the, like I said, we're doing some additional process things on the police chief, the fire, the DPW, excuse me, the DPW director, will have some additional interviews at the end of this week, and I'm not sure if we'll do a third round of interviews or follow-up, but I will certainly keep the board apprised as we move forward. I mean, the thing is, the folks we have have done a great job filling in, but we are still very shorthanded, and there are, you know, the people that do these jobs do a lot of work, and that work is being either not done or shared by others at the expense of their own work, so we do have some operational needs to get these appointments made and confirmed.
Right.
So, but we'll definitely keep pushing as fast as we can.
Okay, appreciate it, Stephen. Okay, next item, we're gonna go back up to the select board slash town manager team building. This, I know, what, two meetings ago, we talked about a consultant, and then I think Tom had said, "Well, we need to try to get three names," and the long and short, I contacted Marilyn Contreras, that had unfortunately just retired from the state. She was in the community development section, where they reviewed charters from all over the Commonwealth. She's a very knowledgeable person on charters and the management of charters and the clauses, but unfortunately, she had retired, and I was able to track her down in her personal address or email and talk with her, and I told her what we were wanting to do, and she offered three names, two names, or actually three names, two of them were retired individuals and one is at the Collins Center, varying backgrounds just for consideration, and she had apparently talked with these people in advance to make sure that it was okay to release their names and all. And Stephen and I, or Stephen actually went out to MMA, then they came back with a name, and I went out to a town manager, which I have a great deal of respect for, and surprisingly, she came back with the same name, and said that she had worked for this individual, he is currently employed in the Commonwealth. Is that town administrator?
He's a town manager, I believe in Franklin.
Town manager?
Yeah, and I should say, if I've met him and engaged in conversation with him in the past at like a conference or something, I'm not aware, I really don't know him at all.
Yeah, but he had done, he had done work for the town of Westford, basically the same thing we're talking about, where he came in and talked about the budget, or talked about the goal-setting with the board and the town manager and the relationship. And the more you talk to these people, apparently this is not that uncommon in the Commonwealth, you understand there's a lot of people that do this, they're circuit riders, and they come out and talk about this relationship. And in talking with Marilyn, I was unaware that they apparently get several requests a year for resource speakers. So apparently it's in a misunderstanding, and I talked with, I don't know if I talked with you, Marie, or Stephen, and I, when the charter was brought in, did they bring in a person at that time, when they accepted the charter?
I don't think so.
Yeah, because see, that was where the radical change took place between the town administrator and the town manager, that would have been appropriate time, but anyway, I've got, here's the three that was given on here. I don't have a lot of information on these people, just what she gave me back, and I know the person that Stephen has been talking to, and that Jody Ross up at Westford talked, was Jeff Nutting. And apparently, he is still an active town manager, but he does this type of work, he's been called out several times to give consultation, or to give training, or pep sessions, or team-building sessions.
And you're mentioning several things, and I wasn't sure, because are they just gonna come and give us a talk and tell us what some of the issues are, or, like you said, and then you say, "Well, there's also team-building, is there gonna be exercises, or are we going to have them as a facilitator for goal-setting?" What are the ways that it's recommended that we use these people, or does each person have their own skills that they're bringing to it? And that depends on who we pick and how we're gonna go about it?
I mean, I think to some extent, we have to figure out a method of doing this that we think would be, that the board would be comfortable with, that we think would be highly productive, identify the kind of key issues, and then have them make suggestions in terms of how to go about it. Like I said, this Jeff Nutting, who I said I don't know, when I talked to other managers about ways to improve, you know, board, town manager relations, I've heard his name a lot, and when I called the MMA, I said, "Do you have a list of people that do this?" And it was essentially him and then everybody else. So he's really widely regarded as, you know, the one that's kind of the go-to guy for this. That's not to say, as Richard discovered, he's not the only one that could do it. I mean, I think I could certainly do some, I mean, I could Google him right now and just see.
But he's not on the list.
No, this is, these are the ones that came in from my contact, the other one came in from MMA.
I sent out the Jeff Nutting thing to the board or to Richard, and he forwarded it to the board, so that one had already been given.
I think I sent it out, it was Jeff Nutting?
I don't remember. So now we have four.
Yeah, there is, there are four possibilities, yes.
And so, we have to decide what we want.
Well, basically, these people, as you see what their associations have been, I like it, all capable of doing what we're talking about, Marie. Marilyn's approach was she thought it's better to get somebody that is retired already, because they don't have to worry about, you know, going for a position or anything in the future. And I don't really totally agree with what she said, because I like somebody that's currently involved in the state, and they're usually pretty well up to speed on what's going on. And that really is just how we personally feel about it, and whether we'd like to go to somebody that's retired, or whether we want to go for somebody that's an active town manager that has a very good working relationship across the Commonwealth.
I guess going back to the form, what did Marion recommend? I mean, is it, is it like a retreat, where we ask questions, they make a presentation? Do they look at our charter?
Specifically what I asked her?
Yeah, specifically, what does she recommend the way to go forward? Do they review our charter and then come up with recommendations?
She did, she did not make recommendations. I told her that what our core interest was, that was the working relationship between the board and the select board, or the town manager and the select board, dealing with a strong town manager, and that we had moved from a three-select-person board with a town administrator into this new board about 10 years ago, and that we were after the final, the final touches on the working relationships, so we could start doing some team-building, and also get into goals and objectives. So it was kind of a holistic talk, but the details were not fleshed out. I was just saying, who do you know out there that could help put this together? So I think we could ask for whatever we want of whoever that comes down. I mean, they're going to be up to speed on this arena, because this is what they've done.
To some extent, Marie, they're gonna, we're gonna, like I said, we're gonna tell them what our issues are, they can Google us, and just like I just did to Jeff Nutting, to see like different ways he's approached it, and they may come in and say, you know, "We just need to have a discussion," and, you know, in one role, he played a moderator, where he basically moderated a discussion and asked questions, and kind of gave some, you know, I say talking points, but sort of thought bubbles for how to get along better, and I guess he must have written them down or something like that, because they were listed in the article I just found, but it's, you know, to some extent, it's gonna be an interactive process. I mean, I do think they, I'm sure that whoever we get will prepare and look at the charter, if we tell them their roles and responsibilities is an area that we want to certainly have discussed, they'll prepare, so it's, you know, I don't think there's a, you know, it's not like a one-size-fits-all approach, or there's, you know, you can run the, you know, weak-side sweep, or you can run a post-pattern, but those, you know, it's not like there's a playbook, you just kind of feel it out as you go.
Well, because, you know, we keep talking about working relationship and team-building, and I just have this perception of we're all going to do.
Trust falls.
Exactly, that sort of thing, and I'm interested more in getting down to the nuts and bolts, like, how do you do supervision? How do you do evaluations? How do you do goal-setting? Because I feel like every year we flounder on how we're really going to go forward on those three issues. And so, working relationship, team-building could be the product of all of that, but if it's a moderated discussion, if we all bring what our questions are, or if we work through a exercise of a goal-setting to supervision to evaluation, that would be nice, too.
My only, or I guess my thought on that is, when it's team-building and kind of identifying areas for, you know, improved communication, roles and responsibilities, or goal-setting and, you know, supervision, you know, one set of those things is the cart, and one set of those things is the horse, and I don't know which is which, and where you'd be putting one in front of the other. I don't know, you know, if a group of people work better as a team, then getting to all those other things is a lot easier. On the other hand, if, you know, they can use getting to those goals, or getting to a certain, you know, higher, you know, higher level on a certain function, and team-build by doing that, you know, that's what I'm saying, I think we just have to get somebody that has done this a lot and is comfortable, and I don't know how to do that. I mean, we can certainly go through a procurement process, bring him in for an interview, do all of that, I mean, I don't know if all that's necessary. You know, I think that the concern is, bringing in somebody who's a town manager will seem, you know, biased towards town managers, although I think when you look at, when you look at the research on these people, I'm sure you won't find that.
Go ahead, Mark.
Is it worth having two members of the select board and the town manager separately or together, calling a couple of these people to, I don't say interviewing, but find out what they, what their answer to Marie's question would be, rather than us speculating what their answer would be? You know, what is it you intend to do, and by that, figure out whether their skills or their area of expertise match, Richard, what you've laid out, and which I probably agree with, is the objective here, but I think we shouldn't be speculating, and it may be worth a phone call from a few of us from today. And I'd be willing to put together conference phone calls, so that, you know, two members, we can't have more than two members of the select board at one time, but two members of the select board with you, Stephen, or two members and then you separately, or whatever it is, call these folks, and I think that's the best way to do it, Richard.
Yeah, that's fine.
I think, I agree, Mark, so long as the board will authorize us to go ahead and make the selection and make the hire, if you will, versus coming back and maybe, you know, proving it, proving the issues by having a proper discussion about it.
But I think that the practical timing's gonna be likely to be a report back to the select board, say, "Look, we interviewed these folks, and here's who we were recommending because," I mean, it's not like they're gonna show up at the next meeting anyway, Stephen, but then somebody say, "Wait a second, I know that guy, and he's not the right person, she's not the right person." But I can't imagine if they send us off to do some interviews, and we come back and say, "Here's what we said, here's what the response was, and here's why we think that's the right person," we get somebody different.
Yeah, I think, I like the idea of two people going ahead, interviewing, making the decision, and moving forward on it, because if we micromanage it, there's five very opinionated people who will tell this person how to do the job.
We'll be talking about this next June.
Exactly, so I don't mind if you and Richard, Mark, you have a lot of experience on the board, and.
That's fine, I mean, my biggest issue is just to make sure that their area of expertise matches what it is we're trying to do. I mean, they could be organizational development people and not, you know, not relationship people, so.
I think, my, I guess what I didn't articulate very well is the difference between coming back with a decision and coming back with a recommendation. And I think my preference to get this thing moving is to come back, is to just say, "We're gonna come back with a decision," versus coming back with a recommendation, although I'm not, you know, we don't need to get stuck on, it just adds two weeks to the process, or more.
Yeah, and you know, Marie, I'd recommend you be part of it, because you got too many nuts and bolts people in there.
Oh, you mean you get?
Yeah, obviously, Mark and I are nuts and bolts people.
I'm the intuitive.
Yeah, you know.
Well, it's myself or Tom, Tom also has.
Well, Tom, I think Tom is too new to the board.
Too new.
I really do, and that's not discrediting Tom.
Yeah, I'm saying this, but I agree with Richard's feedback on that.
Yeah, he's not been the long, he's not gone out and ran for the long ball like we have, so.
No, I agree with your assessment that, having her input on it, because she's not maybe as process-driven as you and I are.
Right, right, so I think that you were setting up the wrong committee, but I'd appreciate it if you'd go with Mark and Stephen and deal with it.
That sounds fine.
Okay.
And Mark, is that okay?
Yeah, it's fine, I was thinking, put Alex on instead of me, but whatever.
I'd rather have you on it, Mr. Paul.
Well, I think the advantage is, Mark, to have you, is you have the years.
Fine.
You've seen the good, the bad, and the ugly, and so you know where we are.
Well, and.
And all in the last 15 minutes.
Exactly.
Alex voted against doing this, and so if you had some kind of change of heart from him.
No, that's fine.
Okay, we don't need a, we don't need a word vote on that.
No, I think we know what we're doing.
We just made a decision.
So we're, so we're going to choose the person.
We're gonna try to set up a conference call.
And all we have right now is email addresses on these people.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll dig it up, I can have to track them down.
Okay, that's all we have, and these people have apparently been contacted by this lady and told that, you know, they might be being contacted by the town.
Okay.
Okay, so how long?
And we might ask, add Jeff Nutting to this list, or not?
I definitely would, yeah.
Yeah, because Jeff, Jeff has been highly recommended by MMA and by the town manager
I have a great deal of respect for.
And we can call Marilyn if we just have any questions for her, too.
Yeah, and Ms. Ross, she doesn't have a, she doesn't have a dog in the fight, I mean, she just, because I did not tell her what MMA said, I asked for her recommendation, and she immediately came back with that man's name.
Okay.
All right, what do you want, a couple of weeks, at least?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I'll go to you, Mark.
We'll start making calls.
I'll bring coffee.
Maybe we can get something done by next meeting.
I got the coffee.
That's right, you got the good coffee, I'll come down to you every morning.
Okay, Stephen, I guess the next order of business is a special town meeting, or the schedule?
Do we have to vote to adopt this? Are we supposed to vote to adopt it?
I don't, you know, we go through this annually, I don't know that we, I think there's been, in the two years I've been here, I think we have voted to adopt it, I think we've just accepted it as information, I think we have done it 10 different ways for the, or five different ways for the five different town meetings we've done, so I don't.
That's basically what I got from Paul, too, when we talked about it, is that it's pretty well just put out, and it's handled differently every time.
And now it could go on the website and on the Facebook, and you can tweet it?
No tweets.
No tweets, yeah.
Not there yet.
And Paul, Paul was backing up this schedule, because there's still some discussion on how the Quintetuck Road issue's gonna be reserved, and I wanted to make sure that we had enough wording out here and enough schedules in place, that if this thing does have to go to planning, that there's enough time for all this to take place. My opinion is, and interpretation of the MGLs and all, it has to go to the planning committee, and then, and it goes on the town meeting, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, but there's some, we're just gonna have to get, somebody's gonna have to make that final legal call on what we're doing on that road, because I don't know anymore what we're doing. We seem to be picking new words all the time for what we're doing.
Richard and I talked, we have to, we will straighten that out, but my sources tell me that this is just for informational purposes only.
Right, but I mean, I asked Paul, when you were gone, I said, "Okay, if we're looking at having to go to planning, then we need to back the calendar to make sure we don't make a mistake," and that was the reason we brought this out. Okay.
And I know that a lot of committees are talking about some bylaw changes, so it's good that you're getting this out early, so people will know how much time they have.
It gets everybody focused.
Yeah, and I, departments, there's just so many bylaws I'm expecting to come out of, the town departments. Oh, I'll send you my list.
The town meeting, and some of the boards and commissions said no to a few of the ones we thought would be the easiest.
But they got others through.
But they got so.
Rental is up and going.
If anybody, we do have rental registration, we do have, one of the ones that didn't, and I'll go ahead and say this, because we received a lot of complaints about it, one of the ones that I believe did not, I don't remember if it didn't pass, or it was not, the ZBA or the planning board didn't really want to push it forward, but that was the no parking on the grass.
It's because it was, the meeting was going on to midnight, one just failed.
So that was a fatigue issue?
Fatigue issue, I think.
All right, because that did fail. All right, because that did fail at a town meeting, and that's when we got a lot of complaints about people parking on the grass.
And there is a lot, I'm not going to say abuse, but there is a lot of vehicles being parked on lawns for extended periods of time.
Well, and if it's on the grass, that is a part of the right-of-way or the tree belt, then we can have it moved. But many times, they park it, you know, kind of up next to the front door, and there's nothing we can do. And like I said, it's a general, it's unkept yards. We do have ordinance against that, but not against peeling paint.
Not against ruts.
Or ruts, yeah.
And not against peeling paint, or all the other things.
There's a lot of different things we can, we have looked at in the past, but we will resurrect that effort.
But we'll get down to that six inches of grass.
And registration of home businesses, that's not in there. And inspection, if there's a lot of employees in businesses.
Okay, so I guess we'll accept the fact that this is informational at this point, and if there's no objections, I guess Paul has set our schedule up, because this is more for him, anyway.
And for us.
Okay, any, no subcommittee reports, we don't have any that are working right now. Stephen, I had a couple of things, and I should have brought them out in the select board comments, but I didn't. Can we get some update on what's going on with the Young estate? Even to the point, do we have to take legal action to get that thing fixed? I mean, it is a disgrace.
As you know, I think I've reported before, we've spent a lot of time talking to the bank, we've spent, the local real estate agent, the property management company, actually not property management company, the realtor is also in property management, he kind of has been the liaison. We have talked to historic preservation, nonprofit organizations, members of the historic district commission, other realtors, tried to identify some potential buyers for when the legal process that Chase has engaged in with the previous owners who still occupy the house, when that concludes, we want to be ready to kind of move something forward. And we've done all of that, which is just about the only thing we can do. It really is now a matter, the land court had adjudicated the decision, or had adjudicated the matter, and said that the last word received is that the occupants would be vacating the property by a certain date that has come and gone. So, that was June 30th, so now we're kind of, what next? And we have not, I know Paul Healy did reach out to the attorney at Chase we've been talking to, or, sorry, their kind of asset management division, to say, you know, what next? And we're waiting here about that. It's really, it's really well above the town's pay grade, because it is in land court. I wish I had a better answer than that, but there really isn't much we can do.
Actually, Stephen, I agree, I mean, Richard, I hate to say this, but while this is a privately-owned building, despite the fact that we don't like what it looks like, and as long, while it violates, and if it violates any bylaws, we can deal with that, but spending money, for the town's money, to fix up a private...
I don't want to fix it up. I want to hold whoever's responsible for that to the standards of this town yet. And this is an embarrassment.
The question is, you know, I think that what Stephen's telling us is, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you can find them in violation of the bylaws, but only land court can enforce it. And that's where they are now, they're in land court. And, you know, we can't go in there and do anything wrong.
Let me put it this way, then, I don't want to stay silent on it. I don't think it's, I don't think it's right for staying silent.
But what I've communicated is that we're not staying, I mean, I'm not, and I actually have been quoted in the newspaper on it, we're not staying silent, and we're not staying inactive. We are pushing every avenue we can push, to the point where we get to the point where we're just, we're up against things that are beyond our control.
Right.
And like I said, we've got a lot of great concepts, but it all, the problem is, the bank has to decide what it's going to do with the property, once it is vacant. And they really have not, you know, I think as a business practice, they're a giant global conglomerate, they're not, they really, they've given us great attention, they've been responsive, they've communicated with us, so that has not been an issue, which I thought would be. But they just said, "We're not ready to discuss what we're going to do until it's vacant." And I'm sure there are legal reasons why they're doing that. And it's not vacant yet, and that's the thing, and I'll be candid, I don't know the folks from, I don't know the people at all, but the issue is, it's being held hostage by the people who occupy it. And that's the short of it.
Go ahead, Marie.
Well, I think the only thing it goes back to is, how can we prevent this from happening again? And we do have to look at bylaw issues.
Yeah, that's just...
And whether it's a bylaw in the historic district alone, or anything, because right now, we're protected if it goes into foreclosure, but unfortunately, it's this in-between that we're stuck in, so we're looking.
Marie, what kind of bylaw would allow you to go into private property?
There are bylaws out there in other towns.
To do what, to fix it up?
No, to find them, find them. And then you start, push them.
This would be an easy fix, and that is, we have, we now have vacant property, foreclosed and vacant property registration, which requires, which actually honestly has been, has been very an effective tool in making, I mean, Paul Healy's always been pretty good about tracking people down to get them to take care of property, but this has been, it's streamlined that process quite a bit. Initially, I pushed for just foreclosed property, not foreclosed and vacant. And there was some pushback from the task force we had, and we just said, kind of take, you know, let's see how successful the foreclosed and abandoned bylaw is. I think it has been successful, the next change would be easy, it would just be vacant.
Yeah.
Or, I'm sorry.
Just foreclosed.
Sorry, just foreclosed property. So even ones that are foreclosed but all occupied are held to the same standards that we would hold abandoned properties. So I agree with you.
Yeah, and I, in answer to you, Mark, if this was in the state of Virginia, we'd already been in there working on it, and we'd put it on their tax bill. Because they had, they had it all set up. They didn't care if you did this, they went in and fixed it, they propped it up, and they put it right on the tax bill.
Or a lien against the house.
Yep, they put a lien right against the property. I mean, it was, they didn't tolerate it. And the HOAs in Virginia, if you had, your windows go bad, they would either have you replace them, or they would replace them themselves, and they would bill you, they would go right on your tax bill. It's just that we've not, we've not got to that point.
No, but the point is, you can do what you want to and bill them, but it's another matter of collecting a bill.
That's always the secondary issue, but to stand by and beheld houses with it, it just irritates me, because that is a horrendous eyesore.
Like I said, I did urban renewal in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and other towns, and it's not easy.
It's not easy?
For the municipal, there really aren't very many tools out there for municipalities to handle these types of situations.
Right. We had talked before, Marie, you talked about stormwater utility, have you dropped that issue?
Oh, no, not at all. I went to the finance committee and asked them to consider it, because I think it is a really hugely important...
Okay, well, you know, we had this old report that was done with Robin back in 2009.
Oh, I haven't even seen that.
It was in the packet.
No, this wasn't in the packet.
Oh, was it?
No. Would you like this? Are you going to spearhead this thing?
Well, I'm not sure if it's up to me, or if we give it to the town manager, but I've definitely got the, I've handed everything I got from the multiple meetings I've attended, because right now, we're going to have increased costs, and it's a great way of getting our institution and nonprofits in town to help pay for the stormwater costs that we're now putting on the property tax side.
When we get to it, it'll be something that Paul Pasterzak and I will present to the board.
Okay.
We haven't even gotten to the general information to see if this is something that we, do we want to pursue.
Well, they did it.
Is that the Tom Martins?
Yeah, it's just 2009.
By Tom Martins?
Right.
That wasn't a packet. The packet, not this week's packet, the packet that went out for the first meeting in June that we didn't have, that had this on the agenda originally.
Oh, okay.
It was all, all that information was in there. I also included the city of Lancaster, Wisconsin.
Okay.
It's an ordinance on bylaw, I included their stormwater utility. I mean, this is something that I have personal experience, or direct experience with, so it wouldn't be that much.
So I have to get with you, then, to set this up for when we're going to bring it back?
It just fell off the agenda because of scheduling, and I don't really know the reason.
Okay. Well, I wasn't here for that meeting, so I was unaware of that.
Yep.
And since we don't remote participate, I wasn't able to...
And I wasn't at that meeting either.
Yeah. All right. Well, I tell you, I think we've gone down to the agenda, we don't have anything else. Anybody have anything else to add?
Yeah, you wanted to add a discussion about the water rates.
Oh, excuse me, absolutely. There was, let me see if I can get the email here.
Options.
Paul Pasterzak brought to our attention, after we set the water rates at our last meeting, and we backed up the rate to make it retroactive, and Paul brought to our attention, to his staff, that on the previous bill that had been sent out to all of our customers, that we had actually posted what the rate was going to be, and that the rate we were proposing was not in alignment with that. And I think Paul sent out an email, and he actually had three different scenarios in it, which he felt could be done, and I think everybody got a copy of the email. And I guess, let's see, one, I guess, was to go ahead and put a statement in the letter, or in the billing, to say that we, and why we backed it up. And I think Paul's recommendation was to keep the previous rate from the September billing, and revise the rates voted Monday, to keep the same amount of reserve discussed and voted Monday night. And he was in favor of that, that option, along with three options, eliminate the premium and future rates of the bills. Was there any questions on what he had proposed?
No.
No, I respectfully disagree. I think we took a vote, and we should stick with what we voted for. If it means putting a note in the bills, then we'll annotate the bills, but I think the issue is that there's been an unprecedented drop in our water enterprise fund, and we needed to take some action to beef up the water enterprise fund. You know, I would have hoped that there were other ways to do it. The town meeting made it very clear that water rates will only be determined by usage, so we can't put a $25 per person at one time add-on to build up the fund, or anything like that. We, you know, we must do it by usage, and because of that, that, you know, I just can't see us waiting a year to get our water enterprise fund back to a, I'm going to use this term meaningfully, a reasonable level. We're at $80-something thousand dollars, that's the cost of one water main break, you know, potentially. And we had this discussion the last time, and I, you know, I feel badly that we thought we were going to be able to do something else. But the fact is that, you know, when our water rate structure isn't aligned with our fiscal year, there's a problem, we need to take action on it. We can't go ahead and put together a water rate that doesn't pay the bills, and doesn't cover the cost of getting things done, because we're constantly six months behind. I support sticking with what we did, we had a long discussion over it. I respect Paul Pasterzak, but disagree with him in this case.
And I think everybody's aware that watched our meeting, we do quite a guessing game. We try to predict what we think the usage is going to be, and when the weather changes, we can get in trouble. This is what happened, this is what ate up $300,000, $400,000 worth of reserve, that we got in trouble on the rates. The rates, the usage went way down. And we know, I was talking with Mark, we know this June, our usage is likely going to be way down, as opposed to what normal June would be, because we've had rain, so we've got another shock coming to that. But I think the people ought to understand that we set the rates like six months in advance of the usage, and it's very difficult to guess like that, it's almost impossible. And what we propose is to immediately start to infuse money back into our reserves, because you're right, Mark, we are very low. $500,000 is the minimum reserve that we voted as our policy to have in the water, and with a cap of 1.5 million, and we're sitting at $87,000. So, yes, Marie?
Well, with that, I had asked you after the meeting, you said you didn't think it came to the vote. Did we agree that we were going to look to set rates now in January? So we would just...
I think we did.
We did, okay.
Yeah. Now, the problem with that is, now you're talking 18 months in advance, but it's better, yeah.
But I think we need to set, we need to review rates twice a year. I think we need to also review them again in July. So we stay on top of usage, because I think we are going to be seeing real changes in usage coming up. Now, all this discussion and decisions were made when the town manager was out of town. Is there anything you wanted to add to these changes?
I think, I was just texting with Paul Pasterzak, who must be watching at home, probably dressed more comfortably than I am. And so, what I asked was, and the thing is, the bills, and I don't make excuses, if the bills aren't like a word document that we control and can manipulate, they are a form that we send a data dump to a private company that prints them. As you recall, we had issues with our water bills, we have since changed vendors, because we had another issue with our tax bills, and we canceled the contract and moved on. And so I'm not as familiar with the work of the new vendor, so I said, "Can we take the square that said, 'Here are the rates for the next billing,' and just put a note saying, 'Please disregard the rates of the last billing.'" And you may be able to do that, or put in a separate insert. I guess what I'm saying is, I think you could take Paul's recommendation of option three, and just keep things in the September billing, and revise it, and revise the vote. Or you can take Mark's approach, and just stick with it, and just let people know that we've made, because it's just getting, the reason we're having this discussion is because the previous bills had the future rates on them.
Right.